Do we have any apologies or declarations of interest?
We don't have any apologies for absence. Do we have any declarations of interest?
No. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the agenda. So item two is the Inverclyde Local Development Plan, the proposed plan. Stuart, you want to talk us through it?
Convenor, through you. The local development plan sets out the council's strategy and policies for the use of land and buildings in Inverclyde. The current local development plan was adopted in August 2019, but the quashing of the housing chapter of the time by the Court Session in July 2021 has, sorry, July 20, has necessitated the preparation of a new plan. The preparation of the local development plan follows a number of statutory stages, including the publication of a main issues report, then a proposed plan, followed by a Scottish government-led examination, and then finally adoption, hopefully. The main issues report was published in December 2020, and today the committee is being asked to approve the proposed plan. This is an important stage in the plan-making process as the proposed plan reflects the settled view of the council as to what the final adopted content of the plan should be. The proposed plan is published for a six-week consultation period with any unresolved representations received being submitted to Scottish Government for examination. Convenor, in this unusually long introduction for me, I'll focus on the main changes between the current adopted local development plan and the proposed plan, with some reference to the outcomes of the main issues report consultation. The main issues report consultation generated 185 responses, the majority of which were focused on housing issues in and around Kilmacome and Quarryards Village. The plan has been prepared during a time when COVID-19 pandemic is still impacting our community. This has created uncertainty for the community and business and has had impacts on matters relevant to land use planning, such as the future of our town centres, the housing market, travel to work, and how open spaces are used. The plan seeks to offer a framework that will enable these implications to be addressed whilst providing as much certainty as possible to businesses and communities. And, Convenor, hopefully members will recognise that our proposed plan is as up-to-date as it possibly can be. The plan continues to identify priority projects, priority places. You'll notice that the Harbours and Greenock for which education is added to the list of preferred uses, and we're seeking a new master plan for there. James Watt Dock, Garble Island, we're looking for a new master plan for there as well. And in terms of new priority places, we've identified Port Glasgow in that industrial estate where the plan proposes the consolidation of industrial uses and new housing development in line with a master plan. The plan does address tackling climate change. It looks to connect people in places. It does provide a greater emphasis on greening in our towns and village centres. And with regards to the housing, a housing land technical report was published alongside the main issues report. This was based on the housing supply targets and housing land requirements set in the Clyde Plan Strategic Development Plan 2017, which the local development plan is required to comply with and which the Court of Session determined were immutable, i.e. they cannot be changed. Members are advised that the Scottish Government has recently published initial figures relating to the minimum land requirements that will be set out in the National Planning Framework when published in 2022. The main issues report indicates that there was a shortfall of 640 houses in land supply for housing in Inverclyde in the period to 2024, with 601 units attributed to the Inverclyde housing market area and 39 units attributed to Inverclyde part of the Renshaw housing sub-market area. An additional shortfall of 58 units was identified in the Renshaw housing sub-market area from the period to 2032. The main issues report suggests a number of sites that could be located for housing development to help meet this shortfall, including West of Quarry Drive and Plain Tree Yets in Kilmacome. It was also suggested that allocation of these sites, that there was the allocation of these sites that elicited the most comments in terms of the main issues report. Members are reminded that the requirements of Scottish planning policy are: A local development plan must allocate land to meet the housing land requirements set out in Scottish planning policy, and a five-year effective supply of land must be maintained at all times. The housing land technical report has been revised for the proposed plan and is included in Appendix Two in the report. It has been advised to take account of the publication of the revised Scottish planning policy and planning advice note 1/2020 in December 2020. The main issues report consultation responses, legal advice, revisions to the 2019 housing land audit on which the proposed plan is based, and methodology discussions with colleagues and other planning authorities. Convenor, I don't make any apologies. The terminology within this, housing land supply targets, housing land requirements, housing land audits, generosity, Inverclyde housing market area, Inverclyde local authority area, repopulation, annualised, compound, defective, surplus and shortfalls. It's safe to say that these figures would give anyone a sore head, and believe you me, my officers have had a sore head bringing this together. Within the Inverclyde part of the Renshaw sub-market area, there's an indicative 100-unit shortfall in the land supply as compared with housing land requirements. And members have advised that the conclusions of the housing land technical report present figures from entire Inverclyde council area when the Inverclyde housing market area figure show it should have been presented, so apologies for that. And this will be corrected as part of the publication. The figures for the Inverclyde housing market area indicate a 220-unit shortfall in the five-year effective housing land supply for a period for 2020-21-26, and the report identifies how we believe that this should be resolved. Our town and local centres, the plan removes the restrictions that existed on the change of use from Class One in Greenock Town Centre. That also identifies the underutilised sites in the town centre, including Note Mall Eastern Wing, as development opportunities, and amends the southern and western boundaries of the Greenock Town Centre to create a more compact town centre. Tumberland Walk is removed as a local centre. Changes in the jobs and economy, history, buildings and places and natural open spaces section are all limited, with the main one of note being the identification of the extent of the inch green city deal project opportunity. Convenor, for those of you who know me well, that's a long introduction for any one of our reports, and for that reason I don't apologise, but I'm happy to take any questions. Convenor, I think you're muted.
I'm doing well today as well. I was just saying it's nice to see David and Jim and like us join us today. I said that before I started. Okay, so the first question we've got is from Stephen, Stephen McCabe.
Yeah, I was wondering, was that a long introduction from Stuart there, but I'll try and bring my focus back to the matter before. Is that correct, Stuart? Okay, I'm trying. I may actually have an amendment to move, but before, thinking of where I'm going to move on, just to get things clear in my own head. Paragraph 5.12 identifies that there is a shortfall of 229 units in terms of the Inverclyde housing market area, private, I'm assuming that is. And within the table in paragraph 5.13, there are various additional locations and indicative capacities there to address that shortfall. So my first question is, in terms of the comparative figures that address the shortfall, are we talking about the 2.52 figure for the Inverclyde housing market private, or are we talking about the Inverclyde council private 3.45 figure?
Stuart? You're on mute, Stuart.
It's that common error, Convenor. We're both doing well. You'll see from paragraph 5.12, Convenor, that the Inverclyde housing market area has a shortfall of 229 units. And within that, it then identifies the housing market area for private in the table in 5.13. But then, when you look below that, you'll see that the Inverclyde council private is 3.45, and the Inverclyde council all tenure is 6.62. So the figures that are presented hopefully give you a flavour of all of the scenarios. And councillor McCabe, you also see within the document that there are scenarios where there are surpluses and significant surpluses across the whole of the local authority area, and that also can be demonstrated that there are shortfalls. So what we've attempted to do within the document is to provide you with all scenarios. And the reason that there are significant surpluses is because if you use all of the capacity within an individual site, so if you take Inverkip as an uncontentious example, Inverkip has a maximum capacity of 650 houses. Within that, there is a programmed approach which would see that the 650 houses would be delivered across the lifetime of the site, which would result perhaps in 65 houses a year. One school of thought says that you should use all 650 houses, but the programmed school of approach says that you should only use those which are contained within the period that the plan is delivering. So hopefully I've answered your question, councillor McCabe, but you'll recognise that the number of connotations that can potentially be developed could say that there is a shortfall anywhere within Inverclyde, and also there is a surplus anywhere within Inverclyde.
I'd like to help answer the information in the report, but just to be clear, in terms of paragraph 5.12, identifying 229 unit shortfall in the 25,000 market area. If I look at the table in 5.13, there's identifying particular capacity of 252 in terms of new sites. So that would, if we look at that in isolation, that would address that shortfall?
Yes.
Okay, right. The second question relates to the main issues report compared to the proposed development plan in relation to the release of site in Kilmacome. And members of the committee did receive representations last night from a developer regarding the Plain Tree X site. So the question would be, why is the West of Quarry Drive in the development, when Plain Tree Yets is also in the main issues report, logically? Why is that?
Stuart, just before you answer that question, can I maybe ask members to put themselves on mute? We're getting a bit of kind of feedback from somewhere here, and it's hard to hear what's happening. If they just actually go into mute, we'll get answers to that.
Convenor, this isn't about developers, this is about Inverclyde. We don't want to release land in the green belt unless we feel it's absolutely essential to release land within the green belt. The main issues report identified two sites within Kilmacome, namely West of Quarry Drive, or to give it its proper title Quarry Drive, as it is within the application, and Plain Tree Yets. Having considered the position in respect of the MIR responses, the changes in Scottish planning policy, and also the representations which we've received, we believe that between the two sites, the West of Quarry Drive site has the least impact on the setting of Kilmacome as a whole in comparison to Plain Tree Yets. And it is for that reason that we believe that the West of Quarry Drive site should be the preferred site within Kilmacome as opposed to any of the other multiple sites which have come forward within the call for sites. Impact on residential amenity, impact on the amenity of the village, impact on the setting of the village is identified that West of Quarry Drive would be the preferred site. And if we are upsetting a developer because his site isn't being supported within the proposed plan, then that's not something I'm concerned about, Convenor. What I'm concerned about is ensuring that our local development plan remains fit for purpose with the minimal impact that it could possibly have on the wider Inverclyde, protecting our green belt, which is one of our key priorities, but also recognising that we do have competing priorities with repopulation, for example.
Okay, just to follow that up, and I'm not afraid of upsetting developers as well, and I don't raise the issue because of that. I raise it in a matter of transparency because we did receive representations late last night from a developer. But just to be clear, in terms of numbers to address any shortfall in land supply, there is not a requirement to release two large sites in Kilmacome. Therefore, your view is if we're going to release one site which potentially could address any shortfall, your preference is for West of Quarry Drive rather than Plain Tree Yets?
That is correct, Convenor.
Okay, can you just intimit that I do have an amendment to make in light of the responses that I've received? And I'll obviously make it when you're asking for amendments, because I know there's other members that want to come in with questions.
Okay, thanks, Stephen. Okay, Chris Curley?
Thank you, Convenor. I think we'll be making amendments too, so hopefully this doesn't take too long, but we'll see how it goes. But just first of all, a couple of questions. In your introduction, Stuart, you discussed about the refreshing the master plans at the, what do you call it, the Harbours and James Watt Dock, Garble Island. Can you give a little bit of further information of why this is considered necessary?
Through you, Convenor. If I take the master plans as they stand, Convenor, both master plans are current and reflect approvals which have been presented to and agreed by the council. With regards to the Harbours in particular, Convenor, currently there isn't an educational use identified within the Harbours. You'll recognise from the proposed plan that we are introducing an educational use within the Harbours. But in order to ensure that that educational use can be introduced appropriately, we've sought our new master plan. The current master plan is current, as, well, that's a silly statement, but the current master plan is live and is fit for purpose. And in order for any new use to be introduced into the land use capacity of the site has to be given consideration, and that's why we've requested that a new master plan be developed. That new master plan will then come before members for consideration and indeed approval. But you can see that the position taken by officers within the proposed plan is different to the previous adopted local development plan because it specifically names education within that site.
Okay, Chris?
Yes, and also James Watt Dock, Garble Island, and just a wee supplementary. Where do we think these master plans would be, what do you call it, rewritten? And also, would any development be, what do you call it, have to wait in the new refresh master plan?
Through you, Convenor. Development wouldn't necessarily have to wait, but clearly in consideration of any future development, it's whether that development would be at odds with the existing adopted local development plan or the master plans themselves. Convenor, I think that in the case of James Watt Dock and the Harbours, the correct way to do this is to seek new master plans. Because you'll recognise that any document such as this is a consultative document, and it does require the endorsement ultimately of the council. And with master plans, I know that the interested parties on the Harbours master plan recognises the need for a master plan, and indeed there are advanced discussions in respect of that. But you also recognise that there are other parties who don't necessarily want an educational use within the Harbours, and therefore by being open and transparent and seeking master plans, that affords the council the opportunity to ensure that any of its policies are up to date. And I don't think it would be appropriate to say to this committee that a development could be stopped because there isn't a master plan, but it would reflect the position that the proposed plan is seeking a master plan. And remember, the proposed plan is a material consideration in any development that is considered.
Okay, Chris?
So by going above, requesting a proposed revised master plan for Garble Island and for the Harbours within the, within what do you call it, the local development plan, that would be taken for narrative in front of any proposal that comes forward?
Yes, that's correct, Convenor.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Okay, Jim? Jim McLeary?
Thanks, Convenor. For members attention to paragraph 7.17 at the bottom of page 42, and going on to page 43. This is a new paragraph that wasn't in the previous plan. My concern is, Stuart, is regard to the legality of this. I'd be setting myself up for another potential challenge by a developer, for example, someone who wants to build houses at Spangle Valley or Inverkip. And we're putting in there, say, well, you know, yeah, you can build houses, but Catholics not apply, for want of a better description, because we've not got enough capacity for the denominational pupils. So that's the first thing, is the legality of having that paragraph in there, leaving myself open for challenge. Secondly, the fact that we've mentioned in there about more problems with capacity. Is it a good practice to reveal our overcapacity issues in this document? Should that bit be taken out? And lastly, the last part is regarding the supplementary guidance. It would be useful to have seen supplementary guidance before this goes to public consultation.
Okay, Stuart, three questions?
Convenor, through you. There has to be a recognition that local development plans are refreshed on a regular basis. There's a requirement for them to be refreshed every five years currently. The fact that we are introducing this into a document for consultation is completely appropriate and legal. So I can give councillor McElhenney reassurance in respect of that. It is a consultation. So we are asking the community for their views on our settled position. Now, albeit, we are saying that this is what we believe should happen. It is not unusual for local authorities to seek this kind of intervention. It's not something that we've deployed at any time in the recent past that I can remember, councillor McElhenney. But what it does do is it allows developers to be able to participate in a much, much larger communication exercise if there are limiting factors, whether that be roads infrastructure, whether that be community facilities, or schools, or anything else. I believe that it is appropriate for us to highlight that there are potential capacity issues within our schools because that is a known fact, that there are potential errors. But I'm not suggesting for a second that we should be saying no to any denomination coming to Inverclyde or any denomination seeking to gain access to houses within Inverclyde, because ultimately it's choice. And the final point about supplementary guidance, Convenor, you'll recognise that this document has been being produced at 110 miles an hour following the quashing of the housing chapter. So what we've attempted to do within this document is provide you with as much information as we possibly can. You'll see from the report that some of the supplementary guidance will be following this committee to the next Environment and Regeneration Committee in the Fourth of May. And yeah, I can understand why councillor McElhenney would like to see that guidance, but at this moment in time, it's not been written. And therefore, as soon as it becomes written, we will make it available to members. We don't see this as an impediment to development. We see this as an opportunity to development.
Okay, Roger. Okay, thanks, Stuart. Okay, Graham?
Thanks very much, Convenor. Yes, Stuart, what a fantastic introduction, nice and short and concise, which is what I like. You did mention in your introductions that we are coming out of the COVID pandemic, the financial challenges that we have as a country. And I'm just, I've got a few questions and I might be a comment. So my first question relates to 5.17 of your report. It talks about for developers to provide community facilities, to think about the school infrastructure. It maybe continues to some extent on 7.17 that councillor McElhenney just brought up. I just wonder, do we have a challenge here? Is putting a development further than housing as a requirement of a developer, if that is what you're saying, correct if I'm wrong? And in the challenges that we have to regenerate Inverclyde and to get the economy going again in the next five years after the pandemic, are we going to put a span on the works for somebody coming to Inverclyde as opposed to North Ayrshire or Renshire? My second point is a point around the question. 6.7 of the main document, page 34, Stuart, you refer to the strengths of the villages, and it's like a salesman. I'm not too sure in a previous life if you were a salesman, but you've done a great job to sell the qualities of our villages. But one of the great qualities that we have only in Kilmacome, we have an independent school in Greenock, but from a village point of view, the independent school, obviously St Columba Kilmacome, isn't mentioned. And that surprised me. I just thought that was a good selling point, and maybe you have a reason that as an independent school that you haven't chosen to put in 6.7 of the report. But finally, and if I may, Convenor, a question on 7.9, page 34 of the main document. It talks, as I think it did previously, the first time we put the report through, regarding affordable housing and exclusively putting them as a requirement of 25% in villages. With my heart as an RSL on, which I'm not going to comment, this is my to declare. I'm aware of what an affordable rate is. I'm aware of how RSLs work out, what an affordable rate is. I'm not aware of what an affordable house is. Are we saying that we're going to force RSLs to build in this area? Or are we going to ask RSLs to take control of houses that developers are going to build? You are not about allowing RSLs to do what they wish to do, as opposed to enforcing our will to say that they must come to the village and take up the 25% allocation that you've indicated? Thank you.
Okay, Stuart, plenty. What can we do there?
Convenor. A number of points. By looking at the potential for developer contributions, I don't think that that's going to be seen as a backward step. I think it is affording developers an opportunity to make a positive step. So if there is something which has the potential to prevent development, then in extreme circumstances, it could be used to support the overall development of the plots. With regards to councillor Brooks' comments about salesmen, no, I've not, well, technically, I was a salesman in a very early part of my career while I was still at school. But no, it's not something that I've made a lot of money from, councillor Brooks, and I'll pass on your comments to the officers who wrote the reports. With regards to Kilmacome and St Columbas, this isn't something that I'm precious about. If the members of the committee are minded to support the inclusion of St Columbas schools within the Kilmacome section of the villages, I'm happy to include that. With regards to the 25%, it couldn't be further from that, councillor Brooks. We're not enforcing it on RSLs. You'll recall from previously that affordable housing can include different tenures. It's defined within Scottish planning policy as housing of reasonable quality that's affordable to people on modest incomes. And there's a variety of different tenures that that could include. So it's far from being restrictive. It's far from being prescriptive. So it's far from being restrictive, it's far from being prescriptive, but sorry, I'm just seeing a thumb appearing on my screen. It's councillor Alfield. Okay, it's just a random thumb I could see. So we're not imposing anything on RSLs. What we're saying is that if there is green belt release within the villages, as was the case at the last local development plan, we're saying that twenty five percent of that should be for affordable. It's not twenty five percent of it for social rent. Nor is it any specific RSL progress. It's to make the housing affordable to people who want to stay in that area as well as what the developer wants to build. So I would, this is something which was introduced by the committee at the last local development plan, and it's something that we would continue to support.
Convenor, it's a very stark Stuart. I did see my clarity on what affordable housing was, was not clear. And Stuart has cleared it up. That's helpful. Whether Kilmacome, whether we include St Columba Kilmacome in the report, I'm not. I know that we've got already two members looking forward to put in proposals. But I would like to make an amendment to actually have us include, or an amendment, maybe it should be called, an addition, that we include and we allow Stuart's officers to find the wording to include the independent school in the Kilmacome section.
Okay, thank you, Graham. We'll move into the amendments towards the end of the discussion.
Yeah, thanks, Michael. It's probably really a comment. I mean, I've listened to fellow members and their points that they've made. I actually think the paper is a very good paper. And can I firstly say, and Stuart touched on it there, I think a big thanks needs to go not only to Stuart, but always officers. This has been a, you know, a difficult, and I know yourself, Convenor, will join me in that. It's been a difficult couple of years for our planners and the amount of work they've put in to get to this has been incredible. So first things first, Stuart, just thanks to yourself and all your staff, I think that's important to say. For me, when I've looked at it and the points we've raised, you know, I'm happy what we're doing with the town centre. I think that idea of trying to change the use and actually bringing in the side of the Oak Mall as well is positive. I think we needed to look at the harbours. I hear what you're saying about the harbours in Garville Island. You know, the harbours have been now, apart from the Hungry Horse, we've been waiting for a development for the harbours from probably when I joined the council again, it's probably been about fifteen, sixteen years, you know, and we really need to maybe review it and to see if we can get some economic development in the harbours. So I'm delighted with that part of it. And the same as Garville Island, I can go back when we were talking about a community in Garville Island, and that was probably before, you know, we've seen a rebirth of shipbuilding. We've seen a rebirth of industry as well. So I think having another look at Garville Island again for a mixed uses is more than sensible. So for those two points, I think are very good. With regard to the Kilmacome as well, I don't know many planning committees have been predetermination meetings, you know. I've got to admit, I'm not in agreement with councillor McCabe. I know that's unusual for me and Stephen not to be in agreement. But I think that what we're putting forward for Kilmacome and the Rhenfys submarket is sensible. And I would certainly be supporting it as well. So with those comments, Michael, it was just to to come in with both Jim and Chris was saying and also what Stephen was saying. So thanks a lot.
Okay, thanks, Jim. I think for the record, that's the second committee. I know, Jim, that you've disagreed with the council leader. I'll bring him in now. Stephen?
Yeah, I don't know who Jim says disagrees with, they would have no actually moved anything. He must obviously have have some sort of a sixth sense. But before I do move something, just a couple of comments. In terms of developer contributions, I mean, that's a very common tool that's used across the country. Tends particularly, I think, to be in areas with growing populations where there's a lot of pressures on infrastructure. And we clearly do have some areas of Inverclyde where the population is actually growing and there will be pressures caused by development. So it's a pretty common practice. And I wouldn't see it as being a barrier to development. So I don't think we should get overly concerned about that. In terms of Graham's issues around affordable housing, in terms of the villages, I did specifically propose that it should be twenty five percent social rent. And it was the reporter essentially that overturned that and made it affordable housing, which can mean obviously private housing, could be shared equity, for example. But there is a shortage of social housing in the villages that should be addressed. And I would see that as being any, that would be a partnership between developers and RSLs. And I would, I would believe there would be interest from our RSLs if there were sites available to development. Clearly, there are sites within the existing local development plan before I come on to what I'm going to move. But in terms of what I'm going to move, I think I should make it clear that I'm moving this as an individual. I'm not moving it as the leader of the Labour Group. We are mindful that there are two predetermination hearings coming up relating to housing in Kilmacome. And while the local development plan is a strategic document, and I think we would be within our rights to take a political view on a strategic document, I think we are mindful of the nearness of those predetermination hearings. So therefore, the Labour Group has not taken a group whip in what I am about to move. And what I'm going to move is that we remove the site at West of Quarry Drive from the proposed local development plan. And I've got a number of reasons for that. The first one is that obviously the report does identify a shortfall in the Inverclyde part of the Wrenfys submarket, but recognizes that there could be a surplus in the overall Wrenfys submarket for private housing. So therefore, I don't feel there is a need to release any green belt land at this point in time. And I'm sort of convinced also by Stuart's passion and his team's passion for protecting the green belt in that respect. There's also obviously an identified shortfall within the Inverclyde housing market, which the danger is any sort of releasing Kilmacome could help address. And obviously, the issue of population has been identified. But I think there are more than adequate additional units identified in the proposed document without releasing West of Quarry Drive. And my third and final reason for asking for the withdrawal of the West of Quarry Drive is that I think potentially if housing development was to go ahead there, then it could inhibit the council's plans for the expansion of Kilmacome Cemetery at some point in the future. And that is identified as a priority project within the local development plan. So for those reasons, I'm moving that we remove the West of Quarry Drive site from the proposed local development plan.
Okay, thanks, Stephen. Peter, do you want to talk us through if we should take the amendment one by one or together?
Was there a question there from councillor Mackenzie as well, just as I spot that coming up?
Sorry, Drew. Never seen that. Sorry, I've been on your come.
Thanks, Michael. The one question I would like to ask after listening to Stephen's comments there. Why was the initial local development plan quashed by the Scottish government in the first place? I was under the impression it was because of the Kilmacome situation. And we're not just going back to the same place. Could you clear that up for me, please, Stuart?
Convenor, through you, it would be wrong to say that the housing policy or the housing chapter was course just because of Kilmacome, councillor Mackenzie. It was course for a variety of reasons in respect of housing land supply and the effectiveness of that housing land supply. The focus clearly was brought by developers who had an interest around Kilmacome. But the logs were not as specific as to say that. So the issue comes down to housing supply and housing land and where that housing land is. But it would be wrong to say that it was simply because of Kilmacome. I would be misleading the committee were I to say that it was exclusively because of the land round about Kilmacome.
And through you, chairman, if we have to take the West of Quarry Drive out, does that not just leave us a similar position to be pushed again? Or is that unlikely?
Through you, chair, if members are minded to support councillor McCabe's amendment, then there are basically three ways in which this report could go. The first one is that members could approve the report, in which case it would go for consultation. If members are minded to support councillor McCabe's amendment, then that will have a material bearing on the land availability within the plan. The proposed plan is written in a balanced way, which identifies that all of the sites need to be considered. And if we were to remove Kilmacome, then I would want to away and consider that. So namely, the report would be continued for a further cycle or indeed members could reject the report. I've probably stolen Mr McDonald's thunder, but that's the position that we find ourselves in. If members aren't minded to support the report, then in order to address the concerns identified by councillor Mackenzie, I would want to away and revisit it, Convenor, in order that we don't find ourselves in a court of session situation. And of course, we could find ourselves in a court session situation anyway, but over that particular issue.
Okay, thanks, Stuart. Okay, Peter, over to you.
Well, I suppose my first question for the committee as a whole then, is there support across the board for councillor Brooks' suggestion? Or do we want, is there a desire for a vote on that? Is there a consensus?
Can I just say on councillor Brooks's question, would that not come out in the consultation? Would that not be put by, not from elected members, but by St Columbus School in Kilmacome itself rather than us needing to do an amendment on it?
Convenor, while I'm not known as a great supporter of private education, I had no difficulty in in some sort of factual statement being included in the proposed local development plan. St Columbus School is clearly an attraction to some people who wish to move to Kilmacome.
Convenor, if you don't mind, the scenario there is that it could just be caught up within the drafting of the report that's going out to for consultation. So it shouldn't be something that is a big issue. If members are supported, are minded to support it, it's something that could be easily incorporated.
Okay, we're happy with that.
Yeah, well, in which case we have a motion from councillor McCabe to remove the reference to West of Quarry Drive and then remit to officers to bring a future report or put to a future meeting of the committee. And it's whether we have anyone who's just amended on the back of that.
Chris, are you trying to get my attention? Sorry, Chris, come on.
Yes, sorry, I'm fairly miserable with the chat function again. What it is, we would like to put an amendment through, a couple of small amendments. Amendment number one is to do with policy twenty one. Page forty two. Chris, what I'll do is I'll put my proposed amendment in the chat. That's okay?
Okay.
That's the main props of it. The main props of our amendment is that we increase the accessible housing from five percent to ten percent and be ensured that it's an overall house sizes, not just what we call house size to be determined by the developer.
Okay, is that you, Chris?
I don't.
Yep, and the second amendment is on, sorry, paragraph the second paragraph, eleven point two zero. And this probably would hopefully not cause any issues. Basically, what they call the end of the last sentence of paragraph eleven twenty is just to add in that, add in adjacent to the A seven seventy stroke A eight corridor.
Okay, Chris, thanks for that. Okay, Peter, do you want to talk us through?
Okay, so councillor Curley, are you proposing that as an amendment instead of councillor McCabe's motion? Or are you taking that as a separate matter? Is it an amendment that rejects the motion from councillor McCabe and adds that in? Or are you looking at this as a separate matter?
No, I think I'd like this to be considered as a separate matter.
A separate matter, yeah.
Okay, so in which case, are there any members?
Can I have a point of order, please, just to clarify?
Yeah. Okay, Graham.
Yeah, it's just obviously we've had an amendment there from councillor Curley on policy twenty one. I don't have any understanding of the officer's opinion of why twenty one is as the officers have written it. I think it would be helpful before we go to a vote to hear the officer's point of view of why they've written twenty one the way they have. So I can consider councillor, sorry, consider Chris's amendment.
Okay, thank you.
That goes for both amendments.
Yeah. Okay, Stuart, do you want to comment on both the items?
Through you, Convenor, the local housing strategy sets the targets for wheelchair access. Currently, the strategy affords a three percent allocation for wheelchair access. As part of the specialist housing review, that was increased to five percent, which reflects our five percent within the policy document. Where it comes to councillor Curley's ten percent increase, that's something that could be incorporated, that be bearing in mind that it could be the council's settled position in respect of this. But you will appreciate that developers could come back and say, no, it's too onerous. And that would then result in it becoming a schedule four whereby if developers feel that it's too onerous, it would be an unresolved matter and it's something which the reporter could decide upon. So the position is quite simple. We reflected what is the current policy in respect of the local housing strategy. And any reporter given consideration to these targets, they would probably look for evidence rather than an aspiration. But if the members are minded to put in ten percent as opposed to five percent, officers are happy to include that as part of the proposal because it is safe to say that across the housing stock within Inverclyde, there does appear to be a shortage of wheelchair accessible houses. It's fine, it's inappropriate to say it's fine. But if you're a single person looking for a one bedroom flat or a couple looking for a one bedroom flat, there does seem to be new provision, certainly in Stephen's development councillor Brooks, you'll be aware that there's eight or nine one bedroom flats. But of course, people who are in wheelchairs aren't just cohabitating, they're often families. And there is, there does appear to be a dearth of, for example, three bedroom wheelchair accessible properties within Inverclyde. With regards to the A seven seventy and the A eight, or sorry, the A seventy eight and the A eight, that's something that which can easily be incorporated as just for clarification purposes.
Okay. That's Stuart. Drew, do you want to come in with an amendment?
Sorry, yes, Convenor. I've been saying, but I would just like to propose that after the one done by officers, it's well balanced report. We approve the report as published.
Sorry, councillor Mackenzie, can I clarify there? So are you looking to amend an amendment instead of councillor McCabe's motion? You wish the report to be through as published, yes?
As published.
Okay, so yours is an amendment on councillor McCabe's motion then. And are we, and if the members are content with the point raised by councillor Curley and the point raised by councillor Brooks?
Councillor McCabe wants to come back in again. Do you want to come back in? Councillor McCabe wants to come back in again. Steve, do you want to come back in?
Yeah, just to clarify, in terms of councillor Mackenzie's motion that starts with to propose that we approve the plan as published in the report. So it would go against any amendments that are put forward, other than those that have been accepted without contention. But I watched, there's a lot of feedback by the way. I did want to comment in terms of the amendment on wheelchair accessible housing. I have every sympathy with that approach. But I think there is a game that we tie ourselves into percentages. And what Stuart's saying is that the current model that's essentially drawing from the local housing strategy, should there be nobody reviewing the local housing strategy and then the plan reflects the local housing strategy. So let's not get tied up in whether it's 5% or 10%, whether we have a generic statement that basically says in line with the local housing strategy and let's, because we've discussed wheelchair accessible housing at the committee a number of times and asked for reports in terms of how many houses we've got. So I think it is something that we should review. But what if we review the strategy and we want to make it 15%? So I just think there's a bit of a danger in terms of tying ourselves down to whether it's 5% or 10% without having a report.
Okay, thanks Stephen.
Okay, okay, so I'm take that then as we have a motion from councillor McCabe that the report be amended to remove the reference to West of Quarry Drive. And that would be a remit back to officers to bring a future report to the committee. Stuart, is that what you would be looking for in the event that change was approved?
Through you convenor, in the event that members do decide to support councillor McCabe's motion, I would ask that the report be continued to allow that to happen.
Okay, so it will be a removal of West of Quarry Drive and the report remains as is. And then we have an amendment from councillor Curley with his proposal, which we've got in the chat. Councillor Curley, do you approve amendments?
Sorry Peter, just wanted to give you a second. Chris, do you want to come up at that point?
Yes, I just want to come in. I hear what Stephen's saying with respect to local housing strategy. And I do have sympathy with respect to that. But I think, my view is we've been pushing this into the, what do you call it? The sort of long grass, I think. And I think we do because that kind of the pump, especially when it comes to what you call it, private development and providing the accessible housing throughout the whole of what they call the housing site. So I think 10% is double what we're actually proposing at the moment. I think it's inspirational. I think it's something we could do. So I'm prepared to keep the 10% as termite, my amendment.
Okay.
Yep, yep, so.
Convenor, I think we should have votes for and against each of the individual amendments. And once we've made those decisions, then we could decide whether we're going to approve the revised or non-revised plan.
If you have a point, do you okay?
Okay, thank you. So we have, well, in which case we've got councillor McCabe's motion then of the removal of Quarry Drive. And the amendment to that is from councillor Mackenzie, which was a rejection of that and the matters proceed as published. So are we, councillors, are we content with that? Councillor McCabe, you happy with that?
Yeah, you're happy to have just a vote for and against that, yeah.
Councillor Mackenzie?
Just to point a point.
Chris, Chris and Jim wanted to comment.
That won't affect my amendment, which will be subsequent to this. I just want to confirm.
This will, this is to decide purely on the wording that will come at the end. Okay, so the motion is from councillor McCabe to remove the wording and the amendment is from councillor Mackenzie to proceed as printed in the report. Councillor Alfeld, are you for the motion or the amendment?
Amendment please.
Councillor Brooks, are you for the motion or the amendment?
Amendment please.
Councillor Clocerty, are you for the motion or the amendment?
Amendment.
Councillor Crowder, are you for the motion or the amendment?
Amendment.
Councillor Curley, are you for the motion or the amendment? Sorry, I can't hear councillor.
I love saying.
Councillor Jackson, are you for the motion or the amendment?
For the amendment.
Councillor McCabe, are you for the motion or the amendment?
The time will actually find out who your friends are and for the motion.
Fine. Councillor McCormick, are you for the motion or the amendment?
I'm for the amendment.
Councillor McAleny, are you for the motion or the amendment?
Amendment.
Councillor Mackenzie, are you for the motion or the amendment?
Amendment.
And councillor Nelson, are you for the motion or the amendment?
Yeah, a lot of politics going on here. Amendment please.
Okay, so the amendment has it that we proceed with the wording as published in respect to the Quarry Drive question.
Could we have the vote please? Do we have the numbers?
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We have nine for the amendment, one for the motion and one abstention.
And who was that? Again Peter? I know how the Tories feel now.
Just bear with me a second, I'll get another lawyer's light bits of paper.
David, did you enjoy that?
I thought that was most of your music Stephen, you're quite right. I don't know what it feels like.
Sorry David, you're not able to speak. Okay Peter, moving on.
So if we can turn then to councillor Curley's suggested changes, which we've got in the chat plus the reference to the A77. Yep, the A77.
Can we not just accept the reference to the A77, whatever it is, as a factual change? I think there's no contention there.
Agreed. Members happy with that?
Yeah, agreed.
Okay. I think in which case we've dealt with, and we were accepting councillor Brooks' change and with the reference to the.
Yeah, we've got ten for Curley's amendment in regard to the 10%.
All right, great, okay. So we're okay with the road reference. Okay, so we have, was anyone moving an amendment to, was councillor McCabe? Were you moving an amendment?
No, actually factually councillor Mackenzie's motion is the counter to that amendment. Just councillor Mackenzie moved the paper and written the pass, so that's a vote for and against that.
Councillor Mackenzie, are you consent with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have Curley's motion that we amend the reference to percentage of wheelchair accessible housing as indicated in the chat and with councillor Mackenzie's amendment that that be rejected and we simply once again proceed with the report I've published. So can I have councillor Alfeld, are you for the amendment or the motion?
Amendment please.
Councillor Brooks, are you for the amendment or the motion?
Amendment please.
Councillor Clocerty, are you for the amendment or the motion?
Amendment.
Councillor Crowder, are you for the amendment or the motion?
For the motion.
Councillor Curley, are you for the amendment or the motion?
Motion.
Councillor Jackson, are you for the amendment or the motion?
I'm for the amendment.
Councillor McCabe, are you for the amendment or the motion?
Motion.
Yeah, councillor McCormick, are you for the amendment or the motion?
Amendment.
Councillor McAleny, are you for the amendment or the motion?
Motion.
Yeah, councillor Mackenzie, are you for the amendment or the motion?
Amendment.
And councillor Nelson, are you for the amendment or the motion?
Motion.
We have six votes for amendment and five votes for the motion, so that is the amendment carried.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move on to item number three on the agenda.
Can I, yeah, can I just clarify then, we're happy to accept the, following those votes, we're happy to accept the recommendations in the report then.
Yeah, okay, okay, item three is in screen, it's a deal outline business case.
Sorry, can I come back in again, just to clarify that that's us now getting into private session?
Yeah, sorry, I should have mentioned that, that's right. I don't think we've got any members in the press here.